Ladies and gentlemen, I'll call tonight's meeting door. It's a continued meeting for the purposes of several items tonight. Has everybody had a chance to look over the agenda for tonight? Everybody had a chance? If not, I mean, I hope so, and I'll entertain a motion to adopt it as presented. Anybody having changes to it?
Move to adopt.
Move to adopt, second, all in favor. Let's see here, we have one budget amendment, and that's all we have on the consent agenda.
Yes, sir.
So if you've had a chance to look at that, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So far.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor. New business, revenue update from the town, on town of Franklin fiscal year. Madam Manager, you want to lead off on that?
Yes, sir. Mayor and Council, we actually have some really good news to report. Our Finance Officer and myself looked at, and I've passed out to each of you, it's basically the packet that looks like this. It's a complete detail of revenue and expenditures, and what we looked at was if the Town of Franklin closed our books today, May 18th, 2021, where are we lining up with revenues and expenses? So keep in mind, this, of course, fluctuates day by day, but if we were to close today, in general fund, we have taken in, as of May 18th, in revenue, $3,529,976.53, and expenditures of today are only $3,406,599.44. So if we closed the books today, you would use no fund balance to balance, and you would actually have a surplus of $123,377.09. Again, keep this in mind, this was if you were to close books today, because, of course, it fluctuates day by day based on expenditures, but that's a really good place to be considering we didn't know where we were going to be when we started this budget. So if this trend continues, you should not need any fund balance, and we had forecasted using around $270,000. If this trend continues, you will use no fund balance to balance this year's budget. The next is in Fire. So Fire revenue, as of May 18th, they have collected $938,845.55, and their expenses to date is $627,962.34. So again, if you were to close the books today in Fire, they would use no fund balance to balance, and they would have a surplus of $310,883.21. Don't be alarmed if that number is a surplus, because you have a couple of grants that are skewing that figure, but again, you would use no fund balance to balance Fire. Again, that trend looks like that will continue through the end of the year. And then finally, your third fund, which is Water and Sewer, as of today, revenue, we've collected $3,538,523.67, and expenses of today is $2,749,320.97. So again, if you were to close books today, you would use no retained earnings to balance, and we originally projected a little over $300,000 that would be needed to balance. You would actually have a surplus of $789,202.70. So again, if we were to close the books today, retained earnings would use zero to balance. That's really good. Like I said, considering, that's why we always try and take a more conservative approach when going into budget. We really took one this past year, just not knowing what the pandemic had in store for us. But the Town Council and Mayor should rest assured that if this trend continues, all funds should be closed out without using any fund balance for retained earnings, and that's do a lot because of the due diligence your staff has had with managing expenses. Wanted just to provide that update to let you know where we project to close out this year.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Well done. That puts us in a very, very sound standing with everything.
Robyn, why don't you, since you're leaving?
All right. Now let's get down to the discussion of the Town of Franklin's proposed budget for this year. How do we want to proceed on this? Madam Manager, do you want to carry us through with some of it, or just check to see if the Council wants to bring up any concerns or questions at this point?
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, if I could just start out with a couple items to highlight. I have had the opportunity to meet with you individually, so if I can hit with some highlights, and then we can kind of stop at that point and turn it over to Council for questions, and then if we need to, we can go page by page. But a couple of the highlights, one thing, if I may, kind of start that route. The first thing I wanted to bring to your attention was, we have put into place a fee schedule. Now, I don't want to alarm anyone, this is nothing above and beyond what we currently have. We have been working on this in ordinance review, which includes Mr. Henning, Town Staff, Mayor Scott, and Councilmember Cole Pepper. We've been working on this for about six months. One of the things we noticed was, our website has parts of our fee schedule on it, it didn't have everything. So we noticed that we did not have one direct place that all our fees were shown at. So we looked at trying to develop that and put that in the budget, so Council can relate to their constituents each year what our fees are. So in this fee sheet, if you'll notice, what we've done is, anything that is highlighted in yellow is a proposed increase, and that's very few and far between. And that's mainly a couple fees in Police Department, and then also a couple fees in Planning and Zoning. We compared this data, just so the Town Council knows, we got this data from several other municipalities of our size. So we did put a lot of work, ordinance review did, in preparing this to bring forward to you. Anything in red is a proposed new fee, and a lot of its fees that we've talked about over a couple of years, it's nothing above and beyond what other cities and counties are charging. For instance, one is a return check fee, that's a new fee. We get inundated with that, so we're proposing a $25 fee. So I start this conversation out in just making Board aware, this is something that would be critical for the Board to start just adopting in your annual budget process, because that way, all of the town's fee schedule is in full display, and at any time, if any of it needs to be modified, it's up to Council to do so. So are there any questions on that fee schedule, because you've got myself, and our department heads, and our attorney, and then Mayor Scott, and I believe Mr. Cole Pepper will be joining us later, that can speak about those fees?
I don't think we have any comment about them, so do we need to vote on them, or just accept it?
He would just be part of your budget process.
Okay.
But I just felt remiss if I didn't at least start there. So following your budget after your fee schedule, of course, is just to highlight your total budget this year. So your total general fund budget is $4,371,043. And if you'll notice, in general fund, we are projecting to use fund balance of $418,736. And the reason I started, wanted to start this meeting out with giving you a revenue update, is we do not project that you will use that amount of fund balance when we're in this position next year at this time. One thing that we've looked at is, we had proposed in your current budget, there was a cost increase in your health insurance of 10%. But staff has diligently been working with our current insurance provider, and we've actually brokered a better deal. Employees will have the same benefits, but it will be a 0% cost increase to the citizens of Franklin. So that right there, of that $418,000, that'll be almost a $60,000 savings that's going to come off that right off the bat. I wouldn't recommend the Board trying to go ahead and reduce that, I would recommend just leaving that alone, knowing that that's just going to be less fund balance you would need. Also in that, with fund balance to kind of reassure you, is your sales tax. So Finance and I have trended your sales tax for the past four years, and your sales tax has done exceedingly well. So we still feel like that's a very conservative figure, so we still don't believe at the end of the year this time, you will be looking at using that large amount of fund balance to balance. So that is why we're comfortable presenting that number to you tonight, because we just don't believe you'll be faced with that next May 2022. The only other thing in general fund as far as revenue is Powellville. That went down from $450,000 to $221,780 in fund balance, and that is strictly the decrease from the street sweeper we bought. So that is why that figure dropped that amount. So that's kind of the snapshot of general fund, just as far as revenue. I'm going to move to Fire and Water, and then I'll back up a minute. So Fire Fund, the total revenue is $939,647. They are only requesting to use $15,615 from their fund balance, and the primary reason there is, in their line item, there's a line item for $13,000, and it is a new line for their antique fire truck that they have onsite. And years ago, the firefighters had raised funding to help offset the expenses of that fire truck, and they simply made the request to take that money from their fund balance and actually place that as a line item in their budget. So Fire, you see no increases in staff, nothing there, and the only justification for that retained earnings is simply moving a line item that was existing in their fund balance to an actual line item in their budget. And then finally, revenue side for Water and Sewer. Water and Sewer has a total budget this year of $5,211,972, and we had briefly discussed one of the reasons this budget had increased, because the amount of retained earnings. And that amount of retained earnings suggested is $1,517,772. And the biggest reason of that retained earnings is for two large projects that we've discussed at Lent, one being the Crane Circle Sloan Road Sewer Project, the second being the Clyde Street Water Project as well. Those are two projects that are desperately needed for that end of town, for future growth that we all know is occurring. So in this budget, you have really three ways you can pay for that. Worst-case scenario is if you had to, I don't recommend it, but you could write a check from your retained earnings for the full $1.5 million and pay for those two projects. Don't recommend that, but you have that option there. The second option would be to start securing some debt services, because you have finance rates that are an all-time low, and you could secure some debt service financing for those two projects. And then your third option would be to look at some American Recovery Act funding, to see if you could use, I don't recommend as Manager for you to use all of that money, we're scheduled to get $1.2 million, but you could certainly use some to help with those two projects, because they, part of that agreement is for infrastructure improvements. So I say all that, that kind of includes the revenue side, and I would just like to very briefly highlight some expenditures, and then turn it over to you for questions. So I want to back up really quick, I want to save general fund for last, and I'll explain why. But Fire Fund, as far as expenditures, there is no proposed tax increase in Fire, there are no new personnel. Fire basically held the line. The only addition to that is you're going to see a 2% COLA, and that's given to all employees across the Board. The last time the Town of Franklin employees received a COLA was almost three years ago, so a COLA is factored into the Fire Department as well. That's the only expenses that are above normal. Same thing with Water and Sewer. Their two biggest requests, again, was those two large Water and Sewer projects. A 2% COLA is factored into their budget, and we've also factored in the 3% Water and Sewer rate increase, which is strictly based on the Comprehensive Improvement Plan that the Town of Franklin adopted a year and a half ago. So Water and Sewer saw no new expenses other than your COLA and those two large projects they're requesting. So with that, I want to back up to general fund, because there are some things in there that I think the Board may want to talk about and discuss further. So general fund, really, the only two big things in there is, in general fund, there was a COLA projected for all departments in general fund. The only other increase that's a little bit different is, we have proposed for the creation of a code enforcement officer. And that proposal, I will give it to Mr. Justin Setzer. To his credit, he has asked for that position for at least as long as I've been Manager. We've never been able to make it work, but we have been able to put it in this year's budget. One thing to bring note to, in that budget, it is actually budgeted and planning, this position is. This position is budgeted in the planning budget. We moved forward and went ahead and figured everything based on a sworn officer's pay rate, and you'll notice on two of those, at least their 401K law and their retirement, based on that higher rate, is lower than a regular employee, but I know there's some questions that the Board should ask about long-term effects of what that position could do on an LEO side. What I would like to do, if it's the will of the Board, I would like to give the opportunity to Justin Setzer and Chief Harold to give you a very brief presentation on why they made that request, and then turn this completely over to the Board to ask questions based on that position, and then also any questions in reference to the budget.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. Let me pull up a few pictures quick. I'm just going to let this play, you should have it playing on your monitors in front of you. These are some pictures that myself and Chief Harold took when we were planning on this, proposing the combination of a sworn officer code enforcement employee, and these are some pictures we took just around town. This isn't all of town, you can just see different, you'll see a combination of litter, junk cars, nuisance violations, minimum housing violations, there's a wide variety. So I'm just going to let that play, not talk about anything in particular. But like Summer said, been asking, wishing to have this position for a time now. Just for, I know there is a number of, with this, you'll see a number of violations, and just with the workload that I have, it's really hard to focus, give this the focus it's due, except for, you know, obviously we get complaints in. It's been a complaint-driven position for a long time, but I truly feel like it's the time where it needs somebody dedicated that's going to put the focus in it, and it's really going to work to help clean up some of the areas in Franklin, and it's going to be a service to all the residents and the businesses of town. We've thought of the tax, that it's going to help as well, where we're going to see tax increase on property values from neighbors who don't have blighted properties next to them, that eventually, hopefully, this is going to pay for itself, for this employee. Because there's a theory of when you have a blighted property, every property that touches it, there's a 10% decrease on all those neighboring properties. So like I said, this falls under me now, and I've experienced this a lot, you know, I usually even now do two to three violations a month, and you can still see how many different violations there are from abandoned vehicles, and as these go through, and junk, you know, appliances and furniture in yards, and trash in the front yards, it's just endless. With that, I was going to turn it over to Chief Harold, let him add some things that he wants to discuss about this as well, when it comes to how we're both going to think about how this would work with the combination.
And Justin, before you step away, if I may, because we had talked earlier, when you were pitching to management this sale, will you just maybe share some very brief stories that you've encountered?
Yes.
So they can kind of see the need, where, I know it adds workload, but just some of the struggles you've been up against.
Yeah. Back to my thought of it being a sworn position with our Police Department and Planning Department, it's a joint effort. Over the years, I've had multiple instances where I've gone out to a site, or even to a business or something, and have to enforce some of our code enforcement, and have run into issues where have, since been threatened by other individuals, because they don't like, you know, somebody coming and telling them they need to clean up trash in their yard, or businesses that doesn't want to comply, just because they see that I'm, you know, it looks like I'm just a plain-dressed person, and, you know, don't fully understand the issue and who, you know, who I am, or why I'm there. And then have physically seen, went back, or had took an officer to these places that I've been to, that I anticipated there was going to be an issue, and compliance is just almost immediate, no issue, compliance starts, there's no back and forth. I mean, I've physically have been cornered on Main Street, trying to get somebody to stop doing something illegal, and an officer come, have an officer come and tell them the exact same thing I told them, and no problem, pick up and on about their business, and no issues. So that's why I think the safety concern with officer, and especially if I think I'm going to take an officer with me, because it's going to be an issue because of the environment I'm going to, it makes sense to this person to be a sworn officer. I know there's some discussion on at times when you might get into administrative search warrants, and in the time I've worked, I've maybe done about four or five administrative search warrants, and that's something a sworn officer can't do, but I think if that ever comes, that we need to have an administrative search warrant. I would just go with that, our code enforcement officer, and we would do it, and I would administer the warrant as the, because sworn officers can't submit those. And it would be a joint effort, Dan, because obviously, if you get to the point where it needs an administrative warrant, this is a big project, it's something bigger than something you just can't deal with, you can see from the road, or from just walking up the front door. So that's my thought of why we need this sworn officer position, it's just going to help with safety and compliance.
First of all, I want to be clear that I'm coming to you wearing two hats. I'm your Chief of Police, and I'm responsible for the safety of all the citizens and visitors in our jurisdiction. I'm also coming to you with the same hat you're wearing, and I'm a taxpayer and I'm a town resident, and I have been for almost 20-plus years, living Lake County for almost 50 years. So I come to you from multiple vested interests. In saying that, in almost 30 years of law enforcement, I've seen the large majority of disputes over property, to the extent where they've gotten so serious, obviously, that we have been summoned to try to settle those disputes, and a lot of times having to take people to jail. Where had we been first on scene in delivering some unfortunate news, that could have been avoided for the most part. And I have been in large and small agencies, the smallest agency from the one that I obviously was at before I came to work with you, and we actually took the opportunity to develop code enforcement position, from a planning zoning director's position, code enforcement, jack-of-all-trades, to split that position and create code enforcement, because multiple times, as Air Chief for numerous years, we responded to incidents where the planning zoning code enforcement officer was assaulted on-site, where they're delivering bad news to a resident as to what they could and couldn't do with their property based on the code restrictions that were obviously implemented by Board, Council, and those policies and restrictions being very similar to the ones we have here. So in saying that, you know, we have the opportunity here to kick this thing off with current budgeting, without asking for more funding, in many ways that Ms. Summer, Ms. Sarah, Justin, and myself can explain, but that exists. And I am not asking, nor am I interested whatsoever, for another patrol officer for law enforcement purposes with respect to traffic or criminal activity, that's not this at all. There is no hidden agenda. Very clear and very transparent, I have met with most of you face-to-face about that, be glad to meet with any of the rest of you individually. Emailed purposely to go on record my intent of this position, if you all desire it to be a sworn position. I respect, you know, the decisions that you have to make for, you know, town taxpayers and your constituents, and everybody that you serve, the same as I do. With that in mind, I'm not going to try to take advantage of anything, I'm very clear and very transparent about my intentions, I always will be as long as I'm Air Chief. You know, with that said, when, you know, we start to buckle down and do the things that Mr. Setzer has not been able to do with all the many hats and talents that he has been possessed with, that, you know, now we can have a dedicated position, solely responsible for those things, you're going to start seeing tax values, property values, on the rise. That's going to far overshadow the miniscule benefit that you would pay in LEO. As they pointed out, the retirement for a general employee on two facets is more than an LEO. You know, I understand that there's a supplement, but then you're talking about somebody that has 25 to 30 years of experience, that's a long ways down the road to, you know, kind of be, not really, not paying attention to now, but not putting it on the front of your mental load when you're starting to consider this position. It is not a position that you want for the faint of heart, it is not a position that you want for an inexperienced personnel. You want somebody that's seasoned, that has the right personality, that can talk with people, and that can act accordingly on these violations, and not be heavy-handed. We are not, nor do we not, want to be that. We want to be deterrent. We want to avoid those situations at all costs. And as you see a marked car, and as you've noticed in some of our new, you know, methodologies and practices and exercises, I put empty marked cars in a lot of locations, and if you sit there long enough, you're going to see the number of brake lights that come on that will absolutely astound you. It's accomplishing a mission. So will this. When you're pulling up in a marked vehicle, and you're getting out quasi-uniformed, people are going to understand, you know, and they're going to comply for the most part, you know, with the violation that they're going to be caught on. And that's all we want. We want compliance. This position, you know, would have many, many benefits that will take a little time, you know, for them to produce the fruits of their labor, but they will. At the end of the day, for the long term, they will be worth their weight in gold. I said before, I've worked in larger departments, where they had their own code enforcement units set out, independent from the Police Department, and we were constantly backing these guys and gals up. But when you get down to a small residential department like this one and others I've served, it's hard to take those current active officers off the road from the calls of service that they are already fielding, to constantly run and have to back up someone else that is asked to take a great risk, and has to approach property owners and tell them what they can and can't do with theirs. We can't afford that. You can't afford that. I hope that you can see the wisdom and the logic in that, and I can understand and appreciate some of the financial concerns, but I think that we've asked and answered those here today, but again, you know, I would be willing to meet with anybody at any time, along with the other powers to be, to kind of discuss any of those questions that you may have. the other powers to be to kind of discuss any of those questions that you may have or concerns. As far as administrative warrants are concerned, Mr. Setser is absolutely right, there is very few, I will add this, there are very, very few incidents that allow for a sworn officer to apply for an administrative warrant. Most of those are arson investigations, okay? The others are not things that we want to apply for because if we were applying for them in the first place, they're going to be criminal warrants, search warrants, not administrative warrants. And you've got to know what you're doing in order to do that. And with law enforcement, you get people that are trained for months and years on court activity, magistrates, okay, and these search warrants and what you can and cannot do with codes, civil, criminal and other criminal activity. It takes a long time to bring somebody in fresh and train them to that same level. So with that, that kind of sums up my little summary, I'm sorry if I went over a timeline, but if you've got any questions, I'd be glad to answer those now or any other time and I will always respect your decision regardless. I want you to know that, I want you to hear me. But I didn't want to make those, you know, pieces of information available to you so that while you're studying and making those decisions, you can have that. Thank you for the time.
So at this, this point in time, I just wanted to give kind of an opportunity to let the board see why that was, I mean, that's going to be your biggest, biggest new item proposed in the budget. So with that, I'd really like to turn it over to council and, and get your thoughts and we can go, if there's a certain item you want to look at or if you prefer I go and we start page by page. I kind of would like just to put it back in your court and get your comfort level of where you'd like to go now looking at the proposed budget.
I would say let's, let's go ahead and settle the code enforcement officer. Can we not do that tonight and so we can move on that? These, I hate to say it, but I almost saw, I saw a place that's less than a block from my backyard and it was abandoned apartments, a lot of, quite a few apartments. And so I'm going to open it up to the board, let's, let's, I think the issue that we've got is, is I think everybody's okay with the, the position, whether it would be sworn or whether it would be a strictly a code enforcement officer, non-sworn, so that, yeah.
I mean, I think you also have to discuss whether it would be a full-time or a part-time position.
I don't think that's been, I think it's a-
Well, you're talking about it at the meeting.
I know.
Okay. What I'm suggesting, what I'm thinking is, I really am not, don't think that I'm, mine is going there with a sworn officer and I'm not certain that a code enforcement position that has always been part of another one, granted he's not been able to get to it, but I'm not certain that it requires a 40-hour-a-week person, I don't know, it, it may very well do that. I think that we could certainly leave the money that we have in this budget intact to have our options open. I guess it would be probably a hiring decision by a future county manager, or town manager, excuse me. And so it may be that between now and then, we have a better feel for how the board wants to go, whether full-time, part-time, sworn or not, but I certainly think we need to leave the money in the budget so that we can have that when we get ready to make that decision.
Yes, Jack.
I think, I've talked to several people, I've actually in a previous lifetime used to do zoning and code enforcement and it's not a fun job. Usually, a lot of times, a lot of people will comply if you have the right attitude and work with them, but some people just won't do it until you actually have to have some kind of enforcement procedure. I know that Justin is overworked, in addition to doing the planning and the zoning and the permitting and he also does the IT. By the way, your screens are working tonight because Justin's been working on that and got them going. So we appreciate all the work that he does, but he can't do it all, you're going to have to have somebody. I had a chance to talk to another police department in our, in our area who just recently hired a code enforcement person. They do more than we do, they're a lot bigger than we are and they even have their own building inspectors and so forth, but I asked him, I said, is your code enforcement officer is full-time, is it sworn? He said, no, it's not sworn right now, but he said, well, we've been thinking that we'd probably need to do that to give him the weapons that he needs to enforce the ordinances that the town approves. So I, I've looked at the pictures, I've talked to Justin, I've talked to the chief and if you look at the newspaper, besides politics, the number one complaint in rants and raves is beautification, litter, junk cars and all that stuff, am I right, Mike? And so people are saying, well, you're not doing anything. I think this is a good move and I've already had one constituent send me a letter saying they really appreciate the fact that the board's considered putting on a code enforcement officer. He didn't know all the details and so forth about it. Of course, he may be one of the ones that needs to come into compliance, but I don't know yet, I'm still working on that situation, but it's, I think, I think it's going to, like the chief says, as Justin says, it's going to be, pay dividends in the long run because what we want is a clean, beautiful town for people to be proud of and the work, and the first thing that people notice when they ride around is slightly trash and junk cars and things like that. And Justin could do it if he was two people, but he just can't do it himself and he's going to have to have some help. So I think we need a code enforcement officer, I'm fully supportive of that. And if I had to vote tonight, whether it's going to be sworn or just an administrative person, my tendency would be to go on the side of the sworn. Now, if it doesn't work out, if you have problems with that, the town board has the authority to change anything you want to. If you have problems and it's not working out, I've seen that happen before, but I think if you're going to put a code enforcement person in, it's going to have to be somebody with the right attitude to be able to deal with the public, but also be able to be firm and be able to back up what they're saying. So that's, that's where I'm coming from as far as, as far as enforcement of it. And like Joe says, we can, we can approve it in the budget and we can have a further discussion if you want to have that later, but I think we absolutely need to put this in the budget.
Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, Justin's an administrator, his job's policy, his job is not running all over town, pulling up signs and knocking on doors and so I think in either form it winds up taken, it's absolutely needed. But I'm like Jack, I think if we want to go ahead and hold this money in the budget and get to that road when we have the new town manager and at that point, then I'm fine with that. But I do think it's needed, no matter, no matter what shape it takes, it's definitely needed.
Mr. Mashburn?
I believe it's needed and as far as in the budget, it needs to be there and as you say, if we can work out the details later, because it's not going to start till later anyway, it's just putting it in the budget, but it's certainly necessary.
Mr. Collins, do you have further?
No, I don't have a vote, but I'm, I'm going to say, y'all know that I was against at first the, being a sworn position, I've changed my mind on that completely. Some of the people we see in these pictures tonight are not going to get yard of the month awards and I think that I have changed my mind completely and I feel that we ought to vote on it and vote on it now. Too often we just keep putting things off, putting things off. And secondly, I feel that it should be, and I'm an old law enforcement officer, as Bill knows, and don't you smirk back there, I was a good one. No, I wasn't. But I really do think that when you're looking at some of the situations we're facing here, it needs to be a sworn officer. So that was my say and I have no vote in it. So I think that we have to either make a motion to go ahead with this position and it's in the budget for the year, or we decide to hold off. So what's the pleasure of the board?
It's in the budget right now, we've discussed it, I think the pleasure of the board is to leave it in the budget.
My thing is, I've just, nothing against sworn or not sworn, I just thought we were being presented with the budget and, and I wasn't thinking we were going to vote on that tonight. And Mr. Henning, am I thinking right or wrong or what?
The consensus and I agree, the consensus of the council seems to be that, and it is in your proposed budget, so you don't need to act to do anything, take in or put it out. It seems to me like you're also having a policy discussion alongside it. That does not have to be concluded even by June 7th and you vote on the, on the budget, you can continue that discussion. I do, from a legal perspective, I do, I see where there can be concerns and it seemed there's some, I want to do some more research for you about exactly, for one, we're clearly not in any position to need to reinvent the wheel on this. There are plenty of administrative, you know, of cities that have found a way to, to employ a sworn law enforcement officer to do administrative warrants, to find out how they went about setting policy. Maybe we can get to a place where you are totally comfortable with, we set our policy, we, our sworn law enforcement officer who is also serving administrative warrants knows how to divide those lines and not violate that policy and be comfortable with it in those terms. And I think that also might satisfy any concerns and it might be some liability involved in that. So I want to do some more research for you on that question.
Let me ask Chief Harrell and Mr. Setser both, what would your time, what do you think the timeline would be to find the person that would fill this slot? Do you think we have somebody in staff or do you think that it would be something that we'd need to look at for a while longer?
I'd really not quantify a timeline because it's, I think it's so critical to the town of Franklin that we take our time and we make sure we do our due diligence to find the right person, at least, you know, that's humanly possible. I don't think we rush into it, you know, as I said before, we want somebody that, in my opinion and experienced, we want somebody that's experienced and seasoned, that knows that it's a good people person and that can, you know, be diligent and delegate, you know, but can handle things in the appropriate manner. And I just, I'm giving you a broad answer, but I don't think we rush into this and I agree with everything that's been said as with regards to the timeline not being urgent. I think it's something we need to sleep on and definitely wrestle with a while longer and make sure we get it right.
Okay, so I guess that settles that, no action we can take on it now, it's in the budget, we just leave it at where it is for the time being. Okay, is there anything else to come for the board on the budget matters?
If I may, Mayor and Council, I do have, I know Mr. Cole Pepper and I'll be glad to go to the news media as well, if I may just take a moment and then we can certainly turn it to the other board members. Mr. Cole Pepper is going to be running a little late tonight, but he definitely had some notations he wanted to bring to the board and public's attention of his request in the budget and again, I'll be glad to distribute this, but he did ask me to read it, so bear with me. He said, first of all, Peckin, I'm ready to see something more inclusive happen every Saturday night downtown. I believe the merchants are as well, I'm okay with some level of town sponsorship, but I'd like to see some input from downtown merchants and give them some control over how this is handled, promoted and planned. Second topic, roundabout improvements. I don't like seeing this cut from the budget, but understand some things have to go. I'd like to see some of the recovery funds used for this worthwhile project. Skate park. If this is going to happen, adamantly I think it should, we need a location. Whitmire would be perfect, but I don't think the majority of this board is willing at this point to dedicate Whitmire to rec. I like adjacent to the dog park by the county, which would need some vegetative buffer between the two uses. I think there's plenty of land. Perhaps our use of this county property can help offset the water at Wesley's Park that we no longer charge them for. We need a more cooperative relationship with the county. We all get along face to face and could equally compromise on mutual beneficial ideas, something is lost in translation. Other options for the skate park could be Memorial Park, however, I fear the possible floodplain restrictions could prevent this, or the service station area we just purchased and demolished next to the fire in police department. And then finally, COLA. Yes, inflation is running rampant, we have a young staff that I'd like to keep, the 2% COLA is necessary. Another factor to think about, investing in livability of our town is a reason, recruitment and retention for talented staff to stay here or come here. I believe if you ask them, they would welcome and support more in-town rec opportunities for themselves and their children. Sincerely, David Cole Pepper.
Anybody else? Anything you want to bring up about what's on the agenda as far as the budget's concerned?
I don't have anything really specific, there may be something that comes up during discussion, but I'd like to say this for our outgoing town manager and our finance director, they've done a terrific job in putting this budget together. I did it for a number of years, it's not easy, we just show up and it's all done and we just have to make decisions whether we want to change it or not, but a lot of work has gone into it. And I also appreciate the fact that I had an opportunity to sit down with the manager and go through the budget item by item for a couple of hours and have a really good understanding of what's in there and what the priorities are. And I think the budget reflects the priorities of this board and I think this board is making a lot of progress, moving in the right direction and I just want to say I appreciate what our staff is doing.
Been great. Okay, all right. Councilman, you want to, councilor, you want to tell us about going into a closed session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the purpose for the closed session, we set up in GS 143-1311. It's actually A3 to consult the town attorney, A4 to discuss matters related to economic development and A6 to consider qualifications of potential employees.
Okay. All right, Madam Mayor, I guess we're, are we going to have a place for the media or?
Yes, sir.
In the media, I don't know what actions will and will not be taken, but you're more than welcome to stick around until we come back into open session. So I'll entertain a motion based on councilor's telling us why we need to go into a closed session, a motion to go into closed session.
I move.
I have a motion?
Yes.
Now have a second, all in favor. Okay. Sure, sure. Oh, I found it.
You're in the first place.
Got lost in the budget.
They usually just run space, first place after the right bill. Don't make the turn.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're back in open session. We have an item to have a motion on. Who would like to make the motion?
Mayor, I'll make the motion that we set a public hearing for economic development project for our June 7th meeting and I'll ask the attorney to word that in the proper form.
Okay.
I think that was appropriate, specify 6:15 PM on June 7th.
6:15 PM.
Second.
All in favor. Okay, we have one more motion. Who is going to make the next motion?
I'll do it.
Okay, Mr. Lewis?
Motion to appoint Justin Setser, interim town manager.
Have a second.
Starting.
Effective immediately, I could say, I mean, that way he's, I mean, is that what we?
I think it would be effective.
Yeah.
Upon Summers, got you.
Be effective upon her presentation.
Do you need to say anything publicly?
I do, when you have your, do you have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second, any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, very briefly, I will share the advice I've given Ms. Mashburn that despite Justin being her son, pursuant to state law, that's, does not present a legal conflict of interest for her as a council member, she is obligated as a council member to vote on matters that are before the council and so she is obligated to vote on, on the question of Justin's appointment.
Okay. Any further questions, discussion, all in favor. Okay.
on matters that are before the council and so she is obligated to vote on, on the question of Justin's appointment.
Okay. Any further questions, discussion? All in favor? All right. All of a sudden, I'm out of business. I have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All in favor? We stand adjourned.
No, yes, we, I thought we passed.